They just make it pink fingers.
First all they knew?
Well, pink fingers, the way you measure you. Fill out your stuff. Um, it's supposed to be.
Well, all right, ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock, so let's call the meeting to order. Welcome. First city council meeting. Um. I'm calling the meeting to order. Ricky, would you mind meeting us in prayer tonight, please?
Let's pray. Good God, we thank you for the opportunity to join today and tonight and yesterday, Lord, and thank you, Lord, for just the good start that we've had as a new group and and what it means to the city and all the things that are going on. God, I ask you, Lord, as we enter this new this new term and this new phase, Lord, I ask you, Lord, to continue to bless the city and all the things that it involves and the people that make it go on a day-to-day basis, and those that protect it and and all the families. God, I ask you, Lord, just to watch over the families in our community, Lord, there families that are hurting tonight for unexpected losses, losses within our community, Lord, and I ask you, Lord, just to be with those individuals and as we enter the holidays and all this, all that brings, Lord, I ask you, Lord, just let us just understand what it all means and be with the things that are said tonight in the meeting, let it be for the benefit of those and the things that go on in the city. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Uh, we have our Columbiana Girl Scouts here with us tonight that, and they are going to present the colors, so take it away, Columbiana Girl Scout troop.
Please stand for the presentation of the colors. Girl Scouts. Girl Scouts, attention. Color guard, advance. Color guard, post the colors. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies.
Color guard, dismiss. Girl Scouts, success. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, now we will do the roll call.
Councilmember Lilly, here. myself, here. Ruston.
Here.
King.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Here.
Far.
It's okay.
All right, y'all kind of bear with me, this is the first, first meeting. Well, actually, second meeting. Uh, so, um, on the agenda, we have the, um, approval of the minutes for the consent agenda for a work session and the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to accept those?
Make that motion.
All in favor? Uh. Sorry, we'll figure this out.
Do we need to do it separately, A and D?
We don't, we're gonna do it together.
Perfect. Okay, uh, moving ahead to the department head reports. Um, environmental, Dale, Dale is actually on vacation, um, this week, so he did not have an update or anything, but obviously, everything is running smoothly.
Uh, Chris is here, is he?
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris.
Hey, hey. No, me.
No, I'm so sorry. You're so important. So would you like to give us the environmental?
I just want to say, everything's going pretty good at the facility, in treatment facility, and everything's kind of in order for the new build and should have it up and going, hopefully, the first stage, um, maybe February of next year. And we'll be able to start that one half, and then, once they get it going, we'll start over the second half. And we staff still the same, and everything rolling pretty good.
Look good.
No complaints.
Good, thank you. I'm sorry that I've.
That's okay, there.
I'm so sorry. Because you're very important. Environmental is very important.
Yes, it is.
Yes. Okay, moving on to the fire department.
Yes, ma'am. Um, well, actually, um, first of all, we'd like to say, from the fire department, that we're just excited about moving on with the new administration. Uh, hopefully, that we will have some good things come out of this next, next administration, and we're, we're happy about that. So far, we have had some good things come out. Uh, as you know, we've got a new truck coming, it should be delivered in the next two weeks. Um, so that, that's a big benefit to us. Uh, we just had all our inspections done on the current trucks that we have, as far as ladders and everything, uh, all of them, which passed, so that, that's a great thing, that, that the equipment we have is still punctual. Um. Call-wise, this last month, we actually had thirty-five calls, like twelve of those were actual fires, so we've had a pretty busy month for, for Columbiana. Um. But other than that, uh, everything is rolling smooth and just I'd tell y'all congratulations and hope we have a great year.
Hope those are brush fires.
No more brush fires, I hope. It's just that season is becoming, uh, as we was coming in, we heard several of our neighboring departments, they're out on now, so it's that time, and that's what we'll be experiencing for the, for the next few months, so. But yeah, everything's good.
Thank you.
One thing, one, congratulations on the fire truck. I know it's a crazy question, but are we still on no burn?
Uh, no.
No?
As far as, uh, the no burn it was in, that has been lifted. Uh, the only time you're gonna be on a no burn is where there'd be weather-related, the forestry or whatever right now. And you'll just have to monitor that and see what changes weekly, according to the weather.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the fire chief? Were there any other questions for environmental and Chris? I'm sorry, I didn't ask that either. Okay. Moving on to the library, and Ms. Jennifer.
All right, so, um, so I like to kind of give the circulation number as far as monetary, monetary, monetary value. Um, in September, we did, we provided fifty-four thousand, three hundred and ten dollars worth of services. Um, that is up from the previous year. We, um, actually do not have October stats as of right now, it's a little early in the month, and we don't have those. Um, in November, I usually like to give the end of the year stats. Um, in the year stats, this is circulation only, this does not include programs, computer uses, anything like that. We provided six hundred and three thousand, two hundred and eighty, eighty-seven dollars and thirty cents. So, um, yeah, so we, we provided a huge service to Columbiana. Um, at the end of the year, we, we had approximately sixteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-four people that come in the library. Um, we had eighty-one programs for adults with attendance of five hundred and thirty-one. We had nine, um, programs for young adults with the attendance of twenty-four, and if you know anything about teens, I'm excited about that twenty-four. We had ninety-five programs for children with the attendance of one thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight kids coming into the library for the year of twenty-twenty-five of the fiscal year. So, um, we're excited about those numbers. Um, we did have our Fall Festival on the twenty-third of October. We had about a hundred and seventy people show up to our Fall Festival. So, um, but other than that, everything's going great at the library, um, you know, we're, we're chugging along and doing what we need to do.
Thank you. Any questions for Jennifer? All right, senior center?
All right, so Monsters on Main was a success. There were sixty-two businesses or organizations that participated in Monsters on Main. Um, and that's a really good number, that's about the same as it was last year. Christmas in the park, the trees in the park forms are on the website, so if your business or your organization wants to sponsor a tree again, you can find those on the website. Um, the senior center served about eleven hundred and fifty meals in October. As of November the first, there is no longer federal funding for the nutrition, the senior nutrition program. So the funding from that, for that program comes from the Older Americans Act, it's not tied in with H R one, it's a completely different pot of money, uh, from the federal government. We don't, that has not even been brought up, so we're not sure if that will go through or not. Through the end of December, Shelby County partnering with Shelby County R S V P and the Middle Alabama Agency on Aging have come up with the funds to fund the nutrition program through the end of the year. Um, beyond that, we are not sure what we will do. We currently serve about fifty people a day. Uh, it's about sixty-five hundred dollars a week for just the city of Columbiana, and so, um, it's a big deal, and it's a lot of, um, it'll be a lot of unmet need in our area. So we are working with the state and with Shelby County to try and figure out a solution, and I will keep you all posted on how that's going. So, for, um, the grand hall, there is the Swag the Bag fundraiser on the fourteenth, and then, on the twenty-first of November, the senior center will do your Thanksgiving lunch at the grand hall. So, and you guys are all welcome to come to that.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Alan?
If the, uh, if the government opens back up, say, tomorrow?
It doesn't matter. So, the Older Americans Act is not part of H R one, which is the new bill. It is a completely different appropriation. Um, so there is some funding that we get that comes through, like Medicaid and Medicare, and that is part of H R one, but this particular, like the nutrition program specifically, is funded a different way. And so until they allocate money, the federal government allocates money for the Older Americans Act, or unless they decide to bring that into H R one, it will not be funded.
So, as a community, like any suggestions or ideas on?
I mean, there are lots of, I don't know.
Support from citizens?
I don't know. I mean, I will say, like, the blessing boxes continue to, to put food in those. We're going to do our very best to feed people. I've had people say things like, oh, I can make a casserole, and I love that idea so much, except for we can't, because we can't feed vulnerable people food that isn't made from a commercial health department-supported kitchen. So I love the sentiment in that, but it just would not realistically work. But I would say, continue to give food to the blessing boxes. Those are emptied out constantly. If you come by the senior center and the blessing box is full by chance, then inside we have more resources, because we restock it.
And the blessing boxes are, uh, there's one at the rec building, there's one at the senior center, there is one at the courthouse overflow parking lot, there's also one down at the crossroads in Shelby. I know it's a little bit out of town, but we have some, um, people that, that travel that way, so.
Yeah, we feel like if there is, could, could the senior center be like a drop-off location for drive-throughs to where?
Absolutely, yeah, we can do that. I mean, we currently have a little pantry inside the scene that we restock our outside pantry with, because it empties so fast.
We will hold public comment to the end, if y'all don't mind, okay? So we can move right along, but we'll, we'll just pick this back up during public comment. Did you have anything else?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. No, that's fine, thank you so much. Okay, uh, moving right along on the agenda, uh, we have some board reports and appointments. Um, you know, the city of Columbiana is very blessed to have lots of volunteer citizens on different boards, and we could not do a lot of things in the city without some of these volunteers. Um, the beautification board has some new appointments since I am rolling off, and my term, um, is, was to expire October the first of twenty-seven. Um, I am appointing Stephanie Phillips. So congratulations to you, Ashley, you will now be a beautification board husband as well. Um, there are several other board members that are, um, continuing and re, being reappointed, that would be Susan Khan, Emily Gravett, Michelle Colburn, and Stephanie Roulier. Um, so they will be reappointed for another term. Uh, the library appointments. Uh, Ms. Lilly is being reappointed, uh, to expire ten-one of twenty-eight. Gladys Beasley, um, will expire ten-one of twenty-nine. Sasha Johns, uh, wants to re-up, and hers will expire ten-one of twenty-six. Twala Friars is ten-one of twenty-seven, and Teresa Whiting is ten-one of twenty-nine. Is that what you have as well? Okay, perfect. So that has a full board for the library?
Yes.
Exciting. Okay, uh, moving on to park and rec board appointments. Uh, Ashley Phillips is reappointed with his term to expire December the first of twenty-eight. We've had, um, some citizens that have asked to be appointed. Mike Bentley, um, his term will expire four, five of twenty-nine, and Terry Reynolds, her term will expire four, five of thirty. So, um, thank you for all of the citizens that want to serve our community. It's amazing what we all do. Um, there is a correction from last night's meeting, I misspoke, and I'm sorry, and I do want to correct that while we're on the record tonight. Um, in the appointment of committees, I misspoke and inadvertently said the wrong people for the wrong committee. Um, so the Public Safety Committee will be Councilmember Mizell, Councilmember King, the police chief, and the fire chief. And the Public Works Committee will be Councilmember Phillips, myself, and Alan Reynolds, and Dale Lucas, who are the, um, Street and Sanitation Department Head and the Environmental Department Head. So I just wanted to correct that on the record. Sorry about that. Those things will happen. Um, the next thing that we are going to do on the agenda is, um, we have had a very, um, prestigious, wonderful man that has led the Shelby County Arts Council, um, Bruce, um, Andrews, and he is retiring. Um, he turned in his, uh, retirement notice back in, um, a cup, I guess, the twenty-ninth, back in a couple of weeks ago, and Bruce has led the charge in pushing forward youth and arts and getting involved in the arts. And we just kind of want to take this time to thank him. Um, I'm gonna just read a few snippets from one of the Shelby County Reporter's articles that, that Noah Wertham wrote. Um, "After serving in the role for twelve years, Shelby County Arts Council Executive Director Bruce Andrews is stepping away to enjoy time with his family and continue his pursuit of arts on the side." Bruce, uh, first got involved with the Shelby County Arts Council when he took a job creating a series of murals. Um, he is a very talented artist. "After signing on, Andrews quickly found it to be a rewarding experience that surpassed all expectations. While working on the juvenile program, he wrote his very first grant request to get funding for the program, an opportunity that foreshadowed his future." One of the statements, he was, he was asked a question in his statement, "How is Shelby County able to create that exemplary setting for the arts?" And Bruce said, "He believes it's because Columbiana understands and values cultural opportunities for state, county, municipal governments to see the value of arts and great, and cultural opportunities in the community. It's brave and forward-thinking. I think great towns like this and great counties like this have it all. We've got walking trails, parks, sports complexes, and we've got arcs and cultural opportunities. We are so thankful to have had Bruce's leadership these last twelve years and for his commitment to ensuring our youth have had the exposure and opportunity to participate in the arcs. His shoes will certainly be hard to fill, but we wish him and his family the very best in his retirement." Bruce is a great guy, so we, uh, appreciate him and look forward to all of his future endeavors, and he has set a great example for the Arts Council, so. Does anybody else have any, I know everybody has had some personal experience with Bruce and some great stories, but anything anybody else wants to say? Well, good luck in retirement, Bruce. Um, the next thing on the agenda would be Resolution eleven dash two-five dash oh-eight. And this is repealing the resolution oh-four dash two-five dash oh-three, which is the no, uh, right turn on red. I will remind everyone that we will open this up to public comment later, but this is just for the council's, um, benefit and conversation right now. So, um, do you all want to have some discussion about this? It was before my time, but I am familiar with it.
Well, we, we initially did it because we were worried about pedestrians getting hit and coming from leaders.
Yes.
But we also were gonna set a time, you know, just like six, six months, see if it worked, how it worked, and found out that the red light was actually not working. So it was not on the timer, it was all the timers were wrong, so you could sit there ten minutes, or you could sit there two minutes, but anyway, so that's been fixed, so from my point of view, we say we can turn right on red.
Well, I will say that I, I have, um, kind of looked at social media, I've had lots of public comments, citizens comment. Um, a lot of people had concern about pedestrians, you know, pedestrians in the crosswalks. Um, and unfortunately, back when that intersection was originally done, I don't think they had the forethought of the amount of traffic that was gonna go through the streets there at Main Street. That intersection is kind of cattywampus, and, um, it, it is a little bit dangerous. Um, but I think, for the most part, most citizens have, um, had negative comments about it. I think, in my personal opinion, that it has brought attention and awareness that we need to pay closer attention to the intersection. Uh, we need to watch out for pedestrians, we need to slow down, um. So I think that it has served its purpose, and I think it was sort of a Band-Aid fix to begin with. I really think, instead of the no right on red, it would be a, in a perfect world, that we would have pedestrian crosswalk lights, but those are extremely expensive right now. That might be our goal at some point. We could possibly try to do some pedestrian crossing signs that, that show pe, you know, let people know that we've got a crosswalk coming up. We can try to repaint the crosswalks so that they're more noticeable, more visible. Um, but I think the no right on red isn't exactly the Band-Aid answer that, that we, that we need. Um, do y'all have any other discussion, conversation, you know, whatever?
We agree, I agree. Um, we did have, I've worked with a couple of women that were actually hit and injured at the light. So there's a lot of things coming into play, your mayor actually almost got hurt at one time. So it was made, like you said, people kind of be aware, and none of us like it or wanted to include us, so I'm, I'm good, I'm ready.
Yeah, I, I think too, um, the work hours, you know, during the work, during the work week, Monday through Friday, it, it probably might be, might have been necessary during the lunch hours, you know? Um, but we've all, let's face it, we've all been sitting there on a Sunday afternoon, and there's no one else there, and you just sit and you have to wait. Um, so, in my personal opinion, I think that it has served its purpose to bring awareness, and maybe we move towards pedestrian you know, caution, pedestrian crosswalk ahead, or, or look into something like that, and, and take away the no right on red.
Well, hopefully, if you're driving and you see a pedestrian, you'll just wait, pull them across, and then ease up and then go. That's the main thing.
Hopefully, yes. Hopefully. So no more discussion? Okay. So do I have a motion that we repeal Resolution zero-four dash two-five dash oh-three?
Can I make that motion?
Okay, roll call vote, sorry.
Councilmember Lilly?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
Ruston?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Man Depp.
Yes. Well, that'll make a lot of people happy.
Everybody should clap on that.
Oh, goodness. Um, so we do have another resolution that wasn't added to the agenda, it came in a little bit late, and it is about the, um, project that we have going on at the water treatment plant, and, um, it will be Resolution eleven dash two-five dash oh-nine. Uh, we still have, um, a decision to make about some financing on the last section, or the, the last bit of this project. So it is in everyone's pocket, and we need to just sort of decide which way we want to go. Is that correct?
So this is just for the application?
Okay.
Um, because there's new mayor, we need this done, but we do need to decide which amount we want to borrow.
Right, sorry.
Because this same form is gonna go with either one of these applications.
Yes, this is a project that I'm jumping into kind of midstream, so it's a lot of money and a lot of forms and signatures. So there are two, um, options. We can borrow five million dollars to finish the project, or we can borrow five point one mi-
Five point five.
Five point five million, in case there's any, um, hiccups, any, anything with the project that may rear its ugly head, um, to finish the project up, it would give us a little bit of a cushion if something were to, um, arise. Um, it would also, if, if we did borrow that amount and it was still under bid, we, we would still be able to have that little bit of cushion that we could use on other sewer projects. Um, you know, up, up, upgrade a few other things. So it would be up to you guys to decide which way we would want to go. I think the interest rate did go up just a little bit, instead of the one point nine. But did anybody have any questions about that? Charlene has the forms here.
We have to sign that amount tonight?
Um, we do, because he said we need to go ahead and get that in, because there's other projects ahead of us, um, because it was delayed in the past. So we need to get that in as soon as we can to A D M. Because it is state money, so.
But is it, do we do the five-five, and we don't use it? Or are we on the hook for five-five?
We are, but those, that will be used. So there were some things that were taken out of the project. We could put that back into the project and use that money, that extra money, to do that upgrade. So it has to be used on the sewer, on sewer projects.
But if we, if we did the straight five, we couldn't?
And we come up short, then we would just have to get it from general fund or whatever. Or look into other financing or something.
Um, it went from one point nine-nine to two point seven-five. But this is still the state A D M doing though.
And the reason that it, there, it's a little bit of a time crunch is the money might be held up, you know, it might be eighteen months, twenty-four months, and if the money doesn't come in, then there might be a stop on the project, and they have to go to another thing, and, and we don't want to do that, you know? Yeah. That would cost extra money. To, for them to move their equipment and then bring it back as an added expense.
And we only got this information this morning, so that's why we had to add it tonight.
Yes, sorry.
To hurry up and get it, um, get it actually.
Yeah, great first day. Tomorrow, five million dollars.
Talking about five million dollars first thing in the morning.
Do y'all want to go into an executive session and discuss this further?
I don't need to.
I don't, I don't think we need, I don't think we need to, but I, I mean, it's, uh, so I guess the conversation is, is that if we went with a five-five, do we feel like we could pick up five hundred thousand in general fund somewhere else? And I don't think so. Is that, is that what, yeah, so I, yeah, so I would think, and plus, if you couldn't, then the project.
It's tough. And then it's big, we think.
Yeah.
Too long. We can't.
But the good news is, is this is the last bit of money we have to borrow for this project.
And then, yes, this will be it.
This is it, this is the final.
But it helps you, though, if you have to reinvest that back in the sewer system to where that can be additional upgrade.
Okay, so do I have anyone that is going to make a motion that we accept Resolution eleven dash two-five dash oh-nine?
I'll make that motion, we accept Resolution eleven, two-five, zero-nine, it's Resolution for Clean Water State Revolving Fund, law application.
For the.
Five point five.
Five point five.
And it's a five point five.
For the five point five, okay.
Well, just out of curiosity, when does this go live? In terms of when's the funds available?
We gotta send it in and then get on the list and and hope that we. We gotta send it in and then get on the list and, and hope that we get it. This is just to apply, so. Uh all right, I'll do a roll call. Councilmember Lilly?
Yes.
Myself?
Yes.
Ruston?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
Mary Davis?
Yes.
So as soon as we send it in, I will send it in tomorrow and as soon as we have an answer, we'll let everybody know.
Um does anybody else have any other city business? And we just did the organizational meeting last night, which was informative, but does anybody else have any city business? Well, I don't really have a mayor's report either since we um did so much last night. I will say that um Charlene and Kim, Vicki and myself just got back from the Alabama League of Municipalities um orientation and that was a great learning experience. It was a lot of information in two days, but it was great to um meet some of the other um leaders in our state and um it, it's a very well-run show. The League of Municipalities is a, a great um opportunity to, to learn and I'm looking forward to working with them in the future. Um had a great day today, getting settled in, getting all the, all the things. So um the next, the next meeting will probably be a little bit different, but um first one, I think it's fine. It is what it is. Um is, are there any other announcements? Ally, did you have any other announcements?
Okay. So just trees are for sale.
Okay. It's about to be Christmas season. That's exciting.
What date is the Christmas party?
December the fifth, the first Friday in December.
All right, and now we will open it up to public comment if anyone has anything. Um oh, I do want to thank the Girl Scouts so much for doing our um.
Yes, thank you.
Presentation of the colors and I have a certificate for you, so if you guys would stay for a picture afterwards, um we would appreciate it like you did last night. But we will open it up for public comment if anyone has anything. Yes ma'am?
Yeah, um my name's Renee Miller and I would like to suggest, when you're talking about the food bank, is the Boy Scouts still doing what they used to do? I didn't get, I didn't get a bag this year.
Mm-mm.
We don't have.
We don't have Boy Scouts anymore?
I don't think so.
Okay, the Cub Scouts, they, they not. Okay, well, the Girl Scouts are here, so it would be a really good time to come out. While they're here, um is, is everybody in town know, knows, they would hand out a grocery bag on one Saturday and then the next Saturday would come and pick them up. And from my experience, when I used to do it, uh we'd get a lot of food in and I, you know, we would take it to uh the Baptist Association or whatever. But if the Columbiana wants to have a food bank or they got somebody they wanna donate it to, I would suggest maybe talking to the Girl Scouts about going throughout the town and packing those bags out because they always got a good response to that.
Yes ma'am, absolutely, it's the season of giving, so yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up. We will talk to maybe the Girl Scouts, maybe some other organizations. If, if they can't do it and, and need some other assistance, we'll try to put a couple of organizations together. But yes, no one, no one should go hungry right now. I appreciate your sentiment on that. Yes ma'am?
Um Belinda Freeman, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Um but our church is, Columbiana United Methodist, we are trying to partner with um the North Alabama Food Bank and the National Guard to get, to become a drop off school. And to, um so that the North Alabama Food Bank will bring food there too, so. Um anybody that wants to join in for that, you let us know, but that's a process.
Great.
Which will help, and that's what I was wondering about the senior center, if I was gonna ask, if I thought about that or anything, or maybe we can all partner.
I appreciate, I think, I think um there's a lot of sentiment right now in the community. I think everyone has a really hard time thinking about people being hungry this ti- especially this time of year, but anytime really. So with the government shutdown and things like that, we want to make sure that our citizens and anyone has the opportunity to get some food. So thank you. Um I will give you my real email now, now that I have a different one, so um maybe we can partner and, and put some different people together to help you with that, so I appreciate it. Yeah, anyone else?
I have something I want to say.
Yes ma'am? Will you say?
My name is Rachel Johnson. My name is Rachel Johnson, this is my mother. My father was murdered on holiday twenty-sixth and seventy, twenty days ago and the professionalism of the City of Columbia Police Department. I, I, I grew up here my whole life and I've heard things about the City of Columbia Police Department, but I've never had any encounter with it. So now I'm dealing with it firsthand. I think maybe with new leadership, there needs to be some type of investigation or something going in into the corruption and everything. Because his case is not being handled correctly. And I would like to be, well, I'm not gonna discuss our family personally, but I do like to talk to you about some things because it is twenty days today and thousands of dollars of equipment is sealed out there and we keep getting the same thing over and over.
Yes ma'am, I'm, appreciate your comment and I appreciate you guys being here and we are so sorry for your loss, tru- truly we are. Unfortunately, since this is still an open investigation, we can't comment.
Well, I don't need to comment.
Right.
We just need to get, I don't get into the boxes.
Well, I.
Cause I want them to know just how the city of Columbia Police Department is run.
Well, I, I feel your sentiment and I apologize and I'm so sorry for your family's loss. And um like I said, we just can't comment on an open investigation.
Yeah, but we understand it, don't have a problem with that, but what I'm saying is the Police Department needs to have some type of investigation or something with it.
And we want to know.
I, I appreciate.
And let everybody know that only news, Teresa, we're gonna have it on the news to let them know just how the City of Columbia.
The Police Department.
Police Department is run and I think they need to know.
It's illegal.
So we got all the station, I'm trying to get in touch with CNN and I want everybody to know. Just how it is really run and run down.
Well, I'm sorry that y'all feel that way and I understand your sentiment and um we will have some conversations after the investigation is closed when we can comment more, so thank you.
That, that your Police Department needs to be.
It's a job, it's a job.
Is there any other comments? Yes ma'am?
I'm Heather Tinsley with the Girl Scouts and I just wanted to say thank you for inviting our girls to participate last night and tonight.
Sure.
Um we've been in this city for, gosh, ten years now that we've been in the Girl Scouts and this was our first time being invited to do the flag ceremony for the city. And so I just, I appreciate the Girl Scouts being seen that way and recognized, so thank you.
Yes, absolutely, thank you for com- coming and um being part of this, um we appreciate that. And y'all are welcome to come anytime. Any other public comment?
When do y'all meet? I think it'd be important.
Oh sure.
We have, um the city has graciously provided us with a room at the rec building. Um temporarily, we're meeting at the Methodist Church, but, but we do have really nice facilities.
So like every Monday, every?
We, we, so we meet every other week on Mondays and Tuesdays depending on the age level.
I'm glad, I'm glad you're doing that.
And we have some really good projects around town too. Um Abigail just did her bronze award putting in a craft closet at the Arts Council.
Yes.
We've had girls that have put in a, what is it, a kids' play area at Columbiana Clinic. Jean did a sensory room at the Methodist Church that's available during City of Columbia, in the Rock Garden.
How many girls are in the Girl Scouts?
Jane, what's her total this year?
I think we're at twenty-two.
That's great.
That's very good.
Yeah, well, thank y'all for all you do for the community, it's, it's great, we appreciate it.
We all had boys, we forget about that. I was there going, everybody else is going, just about getting it.
Any other pu- public comment?
I have a question about the meal, you said sixty-five hundred a week or fifty mil?
Well, no, fifty mils a day.
Fifty mils a day?
Yes.
Seven, twenty days a week?
Five days a week.
So that's like twenty-six dollars a meal?
No, that's not, I'm like, don't ask me to do math, I'm so short to figure out. So that's. Twenty, six dollars a meal. It's less than five dollars a meal.
If it's sixty-five liter a week, you're serving two hundred fifty mils, that's twenty-six dollars a meal roughly?
Yeah, that is.
Was it sixty-five hundred a week or?
No, it's not that much. It's less than five dollars a meal, let me look and see.
When you said it was.
Cause that may be, yeah, thank you for, thank you for that.
You said, I knew something had to be off, I knew people didn't think about that.
And that may be us and my ballot together, but I will look at my papers tomorrow and see. Um but it is right at five dollars a meal is what.
None makes more sense.
Um while we're talking about food, I saw something that got my attention about what we leave in the boxes and one thing was that they need powdered milk. And I didn't, never thought about that, that they need powder, powdered milk to be able to cook like the, or have cereal, they put cereal in there or macaroni and cheese, but they don't have any milk. So if you can think about it, you know, get powdered milk and they said sugar and flour were good items, that they loved those. Even, even the simplest thing is coffee and tea, so.
Are these the little boxes, like there's one out here by the, they're very small?
Yes, but that one's a book box.
Okay.
But the others are food.
So are the other ones that size?
Yes.
Okay, and are they just like clothes and a pin to close it?
Yes.
Because you gotta be really careful about uh box goods getting damp and stuff like that too, so.
They are, they're, they're, they're good sturdy boxes.
The boxes in Shelby are much larger.
Yeah.
And there's one at VJ's in Shelby too.
Okay, well, maybe that's something that we can work with um the, the C-Tech groups to maybe build some new larger boxes.
Yeah, I think they're the ones that built these.
So we'll look into it, cause it's definitely the season of giving and I think everyone right now wants to do something to feel like they're contributing. So it's, it's important to make sure everyone feels fed.
I guess most of these are citizens that live in Columbia, they're being paid, I guess. And it's a, are they being, have a building facility here?
Are they, I'm sorry.
At the senior center.
Okay, well, there's meals at the senior center.
We do meals on, that includes meals on wheels and the senior center.
But some of those people, it's bad because their last meal's on Friday, so on Saturday and Sunday, they're left to fend for themselves and they can't get out there homebound, so it's, it's really sad.
One part of what we've been asked to do to save money is to audit the people who receive meals. And so if your, if your active, activities of daily living aren't, don't meet a certain criteria, a new criteria, then you're no longer gonna get meals. And so there are those people who are like right on the cusp who will no longer get meals.
Yes ma'am.
Don't have a problem with being a temporary drop off at the shopping.
Okay.
I have plenty of rooms, so anybody wants drop, then y'all could come pick it up when you need it.
Okay, I appreciate that. I, I think maybe we'll try to put something on our social media pages or something like that to kinda help, help people know. We can do something here at City Hall as well, but um I know there's some peer, um peer helpers in some other schools that have um implemented the bagged meals that several of us have shared on Facebook, so you just grab a meal and go. I think those are discreet enough that you can, a teacher could put something like that down in a child's backpack or put two down in a child's backpack and they can go home and have, have two meals and you have all the ingredients for that, so.
They do that on Fridays, all the sho- the children that needed a, a bag to take home for two different days.
Yeah, I don't know, we did something during COVID, uh we did backpack buddies, I'm sure this is still, so I mean obviously there's a drop off location at the Heaven Hill,
Right.
that's still, that's a, that's a good place to, and they take fruit, they take everything, so. Um the Heaven Hill would be a good drop off or something like that too.
Well, I think tomorrow we'll try to work on some resources and either put it on our website or on our social media, just that way everyone can have, have some communication and, and know where drop offs are and what the need is. Did you have something, Ms. Jennifer?
Yeah, I just, um if anyone wants to bring food to the library, I will make sure it gets to the senior center. We are open um late on Tuesday and Thursdays and on Saturdays. So if City Hall is closed or if other places are closed and you want to give, bring it by the library and we will make sure it gets to the right people.
Same thing with the Police Department, we're required today, seven days a week, as fact as always, in the Shelby dropping off food for the senior center when it's open.
We'll get some containers for you guys. Yes ma'am?
Al- also, just a comment, uh I know, I don't know what's going on with what the woman said about her husband. I'm, I'm, unfortunately, I don't even know who it was, I haven't heard anything about it, but um I'm sure there could be some problems uh in the Police Department, but I do wanna say that I would not give them a blanket, um bad report. Uh we've had nothing, believe me, for twenty years, we've had nothing but good, good, well, I can't say the whole twenty years, but we've had nothing but good responses from the Police Department to uh try to keep us um in our area, you know, without having problems and stuff like that. So I don't know what it is, but I hate to hear so, a whole community department be put into a, a bad situation if we don't know who it is and what's going on, so.
I appreciate that and we always will take um compliments, complaints and investigations into our departments or anything like that very seriously. We just can't comment on something of this nature because it's still an open investigation. So um if a citizen files a, a complaint against a certain employee, um a department, anything like that, we're going to investigate it, but there's, we're just very limited to what we can say right now. And I'm, I'm very sorry, I'm very sorry for anyone that has lost a family member and is grieving right now. But we will always investigate any kind of allegation or anything like that, so that's all I can comment on that, so. Is there any other public comment? Well, if not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, our first, my first meeting, y'all are all.
And welcome.
Thank you.
We're really looking forward to somebody here.
Thank you so much.
I make the motion, we adjourn.
All in favor? Thank you.